All eyes and salute the flag.
Before we start, I, because this is a school building, I want to, I guess I'm required to remind everyone that there are fire exits behind you, and to your, to your left, my right, and to your right, my left. In case of fire, please use one. I'll call the common council meeting to order, and I'll take the role. Please answer with yes. First word?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Third?
Yes.
Fourth?
Yes.
Fifth?
Yes.
Sixth?
Yes.
The, uh... Purpose of the public hearing this evening is to listen to idea, to listen to comments from the public about a proposed exchange of lands between the Fulton School District and the city of Fulton. I guess historically what has happened through the years is at some point, either when the Fulton School District was, was taken away from the city... Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I guess what had happened, uh, is that the Fulton School District, in one fashion or another, became the owner of Hewlett Park. I've, I'm not sure how they became the owner of Hewlett Park, except that they in fact do own the property. Several years ago, there was a very sick child that the community had a fundraising event for, uh, the C.V. Abbott, uh, child. And apparently, the people that were involved in that fundraising came to the city of Fulton and asked the city if it was all right to put some playground equipment on Hewl-, what was known as Hewlett Park. Uh, and I guess the city then granted those people permission to put playground equipment on that park. It has subsequently been discovered that the park is owned by the school district. Whether, when the city of Fulton spun the school district off, it also happened to take that park with it, or whether someone deeded it to the school system is not known. We're just trying to correct a problem of land that is owned by the people in the city of Fulton and straighten out the ownership. We do not intend to take any action tonight. We intend to listen. And I understand that one of the, one of the parcels involved, uh, in our proposed exchange, which is the Chestnut Street, uh, the paper street that exists out here to the north of the school, there's a gentleman by the name of Mr. Benway that owns two lots along the lake. And certainly, I've talked to the school district, and if this land were ever exchanged, the school district would continue to grant him, they have stated they would continue to grant him a legal right-of-way across that land so he could get to his property. And with that, that's all the history I know, but I'm willing to listen to anyone here this evening that would like to talk about this issue. Mike? Mr. Blue?
Yes. The, the, uh, property of the parcel of land we're speaking about is approximately sixty feet to the north of the, um, school parking lot, um, adjacent to Recreation Park, and three hundred and thirty-five feet west towards Lake Nianawana. And for the immediate future, there is nothing planned, but in, in the future, if any type of, um, construction or anything came up, would be to the district's advantage, and economically, we could expand the parking. It would be able, this parcel of land, coupled with some land the district owns, would produce fifty-three more parking spaces at the north end of the school. And, um, in the summertime, and during the activities, the school property or parking lots are used for city recreation purposes and vice versa. Because as the mayor did say, the property is, is owned by all the people, regardless, it's, it's the school or the city. So right now, the immediate plans, there is nothing planned.
All right, now, that's supposed to be a six, this is sixty-six foot right-of-way, right? Fifty-foot right-of-way? What property do you want? You want, starting at the north, right-of-way of Chestnut Street, going north, or do you want yours, you want to stop at the south, right-of-way of the street?
Okay, looking at, at, um, where Chestnut Street ends, the pavement area ends in the dirt-paper road?
It's not a paper road. They use that street.
Okay, right. That, what we're referring to would be...
No, a paper road is an abandoned street. And that's not an abandoned street.
It would be sixty feet from the school property line towards Route Three, towards Recreation Park, which would be north.
And, uh, you're assuming the sixty-foot right-of-way of Chestnut Street is south?
Yes.
Do you go any farther north of Chestnut Street?
No.
You, it's all you're going to assume?
Yes.
Why can't you use the south end of the school for more parking? We live on that side of the street. We've been dumped on for years from the school system, with all the traffic and everything else going through on Chestnut Street and on Denishe. Why, why do we have to assume more, fifty-six more cars?
Well, the, the, hopefully, you may have noticed the difference with the, the parking lot that we do have on the south end. Obviously, if we could put more parking on the south end, it would be to our advantage to do that, but there's no more property.
But I, you have more, you, excuse me, you have more parking now than you've had in years. I mean, you didn't lose a lot of parking space when you added on, on the north side.
Why should we be saddled with more traffic on Chestnut Street side? Now, and you know yourself, that you're not going to do this in the future, because you never did finish off the north end of that parking lot, assuming that you were going to get this property, which you probably will end up by getting, which, and we're very, very much against, because I think that's going to add to the pollution in that area. If they're talking about making, uh, uh, public walkways along the lake and everything else like that, with more traffic down there, the people living in that area are, I know you don't have too much of a representation here, but the reason why you don't is nobody heard about this thing until today. But I, I don't think it's fair to what people that live on Denishe and on Chestnut Street and on Broadwell have, they have more traffic being pushed into that area.
And I think it's a nice park, and then you're going to be, you're going to be taken away from the park, the nice trees, you know. The park, year after year, I mean, they take down the swing sets, the kids tore up the park.
The intent is not to interfere with the tree line. It would, any, any parking would stop short of the tree line. There's no intent to disrupt the trees.
Then, then you're, uh, if you do, if you do ever go back and develop that park the way it's supposed to be, which is a disgrace to the city, because they don't, you have peop-, a lot of people come down there, there's no place for them to park there. You take that section away from them, there's, where, where else you going to park? You say the railroad property, then why doesn't the school use the railroad property in front of the school?
See, that, that's the, the intent would be to make that area parking, which we, the public could use it for, with Recreation Park, people park there in the summer now. That's the intent, is to allow the public to use it.
Well, I brought it up just now.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, yeah. Don't give me that stuff. That, that's... I'm sorry, but I'm too upset to bring it up anymore farther. You people just don't think of the other people.
Miss, Miss, I'm sorry, I, I knew Mike's name, and I believe Mike lives on Chestnut Street, but for the record, could I get your name?
Yvonne Mace.
Yvonne?
This is Yvonne Mace.
I, I'm s-
And I reside at 518 Chestnut Street, at the very end.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, I was under the impression that once they completed the port parking lot over here on the south side, that they were going to take down the no parking signs on Chestnut Street. I don't own a driveway, so I have to park there on the road. So I'm kind of stuck.
Let me, uh, direct that to Mr. Teramidji. Uh, do you know about that, too?
Uh, yeah. Um, by my own preference, Yvonne, uh, I would like to see that extended on a trial basis throughout the winter, uh, to determine, you know, once winter comes, snow falls, the parking spaces get narrow. And I don't want anybody to try to retreat to the street sides where we had the problem last year. So I was looking to extend this on a trial through the winter, then perhaps in the spring, we can look at it again.
The only problems they had with the buses coming down is when the high school kids were forced to park on both sides of the street. Then they had a problem with the cars, the buses coming down through. But before that, they never had any problems, because it's a one-way street. They're only going up one way. So anybody parked in my side isn't going to interfere with the school buses. I mean, why couldn't they have parking on one side of the street? You're only talking one block, and then there's what, three houses on that whole block?
Could I, uh, help? Her building line, on the west side of her house, was, is probably within six inches of railroad property. So she, legally, she cannot make a driveway for her house. So in order for her to park, she has to park in front of the house. If she parks on the sidewalk, she gets a ticket for it.
There isn't a, there's no sidewalk there, but I've gotten several tickets. But I've been parked beyond the white line, actually on my grass, but part of my tire is still on the pavement.
Well, I think the problem, when I discussed it with you before, was that you were a night worker?
I worked swing shift.
Swing shift, and then?
Right.
Most of the time, when you came home, that you found cars parked there?
Yeah.
And so we thought the remedy was to eliminate parking?
It was because of the high school students not having any place to park. So now that their situation is corrected, why can't they take the signs back?
I, I don't know that it's corrected. That's the point I was trying to get to.
I mean, I don't see any cars parking anywhere else.
Presently. I can discuss it with you later on, and maybe we can look into it.
Okay.
Pardon me, anyone else have any comments? No other comments? Any, uh, anyone on the council or anyone on the school board like to make a comment?
Well, I would just say with regard to Hewlett...
I just wanted to know about parking from that side. What, uh, another question on that acquisition is, uh...
If you're going to swap property, why don't you swap the property for something that you can put on the tax rolls? Otherwise, let's leave it just the way it is.
Neither of those properties are on the tax roll, though.
Sure, they got Old Street set there with doing nothing. Swap Old Street, and sell, put it on the market, sell it. Or you got a big field out on Cedar Street. Put some of that property back on the tax rolls.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Teramidji?
Yes. I would just, uh, just say in regard to Hewlett Park, uh, I don't know at the present that it fits into the overall master plan of the Recreation Department. Uh, I would like to see some recommendation come on, come out of the Recreation Commission. I know in previous meetings, uh, they have chosen to, uh, shut down, if you will, all the small neighborhood parks, and concentrate and focus on a major park on the east and west of, uh, Fulton. Uh, so therefore, I would like to see some direction come from the Recreation Commission, uh, to help us evaluate this.
Was it the Recreation Commission that granted CJ Abbott's permission to put the...
No, it wasn't. No, it was done by resolution of the common council, perhaps erroneously.
What's the solution to that?
To rescind the resolution.
And then what do you do with all the material assigned to turn?
Technically, I believe it belonged to the city school district. I bet that would have to be an issue you take up legally. Well, it would be your property, then.
Mr. Mayor?
But I'm not sure the fixtures would be the school district's.
Mr. Webster?
Merrill Webster, city resident, member of the school board. As far as I'm concerned, uh, this has been going on several years now. We met with the previous administration. My primary concern, both as a citizen and as a member of the school board, has been the school district's liability as Hewlett Park. We are already, we have, there is already one claim against both the city and the school district for an injury at that park. As far as I'm concerned, the, having a, uh, a park there on school property that is completely distant from any school building, that cannot be maintained and protected by the school district, is completely wrong as far as the school district is concerned. Since the city opted to put equipment on it, and there has been city playground equipment on it for as long as I've been in Fulton, and that goes back at least to nineteen sixty-five, I feel in all fairness to the school district, that the, uh, city assume responsibility for that playground. If the city does not assume responsibility for that playground, then I would ask that the city remove all equipment, playground equipment, from that site. So it would cease to be a liability. If necessary, we can go to the school board, I can propose a resolution at the school board, that that property be fenced in. It's already fenced in on two sides now. It just needs the division, fence him along the Division Street side. But certainly, if the city has equipment on it, the city should maintain it, and it should not be a liability for the school district. As far as the property swap is concerned, that has been brought up, because under state law, any local government, be it a school district, be it a city, or whatever, must obtain fair, so-called fair market value for any property it disposes of. Simplest solution there without any cash exchanging hands is piece of land for piece of land. Thank you.
Well, I would speak to the, uh, playground equipment removal, or if it should stay. Uh, if you looked at that equipment recently, it is beginning to show signs of disrepair. If the city were to maintain that, uh, there is significant cost, plus bringing that park up to state code. Uh, that was one of the reasons why our neighborhood parks were to be shut down. I don't know that, uh, I, I, I would prefer illegal, uh, rendering on who owns that playground equipment. Uh, I would not be in favor of accepting that equipment at this time.
You're washing your hands of the whole thing, and you people are the president, not me personally, but you're, and, and who's going to be responsible for it, then?
No, we're, we're, the intention of this hearing tonight is to show a good faith that we're trying to, that you and we both, you as the school board and we as the common council, are trying to straighten out a problem which has existed for many years. And every one of us can leave office and continue to leave this problem. And Mr. Webster pointed out that the previous council tried to address this que- question. We're, we're trying to find a sensible solution to a problem of properties owned by taxpayers that raises liability issues, among other things, for all the taxpayers. And we certainly are not trying to pass the buck. If we were passing the buck, you wouldn't have this public hearing this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address Ron Campano, with the, thank you for your hat off. I'd like to speak to you as a parent, a resident, a block away from that park. And I've spoken with Mr. Cavalero regarding the subject, and I know he shares some, some concern about the disposition of this, this matter. As a resident, and particularly of that block of area where those, where the park is and the children are playing, I recognize that the neighborhood children are obviously using that park on a regular basis, but just as regularly, there are many, many cars parked along that park, where people are coming from all over to bring their children to that park, because it's different from any other park facility the city may have to offer those kids. I can tell you that it's always being used. I can tell you that the city has done a fine job in maintaining its posture in terms of garbage and mowing, and I know that some community residents, uh, helped the city in terms of putting some paint and lobbying to get some swings back up on the existing swing set that was there. I would not like, as a resident of that area, to see any major disruption of park service. And by that, I would, I, I think it's very nice that any ward or any given area of the city has some opportunity for some young people to go and burn off all that energy which they have, whether that be on a Thursday night, or whether that be on a Sunday afternoon. And there's much family activity. And if we, as a city, of people are going to address quality of life issues, then I would think that parks and recreation become part of that issue. And as representatives, I would think, as, as, as my representative, I would hope that you would take on all the responsibility of, of everything that has been left for you to deal with, in addition to those things which you might pursue as your, as your own ideas, as a group of people. And if I could just for a minute put a school board hat on, I take on that responsibility. There's lots of things I can't do a whole lot about, because somebody before me made the decision. But I would like to suggest to you, my pledge to you, that we need to roll up our sleeves and work very closely and very cooperatively with one another and find a resolution to this problem. And let one another recognize that there must be a reasonable, rational, easily-made, very affordable solution to this problem. And I don't think that needs to involve disrupting the park service. I don't think that needs to involve raising of feathers, either by the common council nor by the school district. And if the property on Chestnut Street is going to raise feathers with the community, then I think that we can take those comments into account and come to some other kind of agreement that can make sense. Our options here might be endless, and we may not be looking only at one or two. And so I'm just asking you, as a group of people, to help me and us, as a group of people, to, to, you know, explore further if we need to, in order to find some very necessary solution.
Is the park visible to you from where you live? I don't know. I, I'll get you as to where.
I live on Fifth Street, just adjacent to the park. But the park is on Sixth Street.
Has, has the, has the park, and I don't know the answer to this. They say, "Don't ask a question unless you know the answer," but I truly don't know the answer to this. Has the park always been orderly? It's not been a source of, uh, delinquency or troublesome at all to the neighborhood?
To my knowledge, the activities that, that I have witnessed have been far more family-oriented with younger children than teenage children or junior-high-aged children that, um, who used to play there because of the nature of the ballpark field.
I'll also check the-
Soccer field, or whatever.
Police reports. I haven't heard of a lot of complaints in the area, but I was just curious.
In that neighborhood, you can hear a pin drop.
You know, I wish you'd say that in our neighborhood. Uh, uh, it's just what Miss Campano just said. What's the problem? Let the city take over the, the property. The school board didn't even know they owned the thing. And the people over there want to park, give them a park. Forget it. And, and just let things go the way they are. But I think it's the school, the school board who just happened to say, "Well, here's our chance to get fifty-five more cars over on that end of the, the school building."
No, let me-
So I, I think just a bit, why don't we leave it just the way it is, and the city keep on assuming the responsibility for it?
Let me, uh, let me, if I might give you my perspective on this. The, the school did not twist our arm. The school had, yeah, the school had mentioned this early, be, before I took office. They had mentioned this, and they had mentioned the Hewlett Park situation. And I don't know that one is contingent on the other or vice versa. We're just trying to understand what the problems are with this transaction, and hopefully save the community a mess sometime in the future. I think, for instance, we both probably carry liability insurance on the property. It isn't a lot of money. And if we, if one or the other of us gave up the insurance, you probably wouldn't even find it in a budget. It's such a small amount of money, but it's just dumb that one party owns it, the other party thinks they do.
The school board has a mind. Let the city take it over, and then sell it at an auction, put it on the tax roll.
Wouldn't be able to do that, Mike.
That doesn't correspond to what you just said, which is keep it a park?
If you want to keep the park, keep it.
Okay, okay.
But if the city doesn't want to keep the park, and the school board doesn't want the property, city take the property over, give them a dollar for it, or put it on the tax roll, so.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
On that stage, this is the, uh, city, there's, uh, cutting off the, uh, that, uh, property?
The school district-
The, the school district, uh, could, uh, could, uh, sell, sell the, uh, property and have the, uh, the revenue from it.
I would just like to, uh, address one issue that, uh, Miss Camp, Miss Campano was talking about. Yes, that neighborhood park is, is very useful and resourceful. What you missed, the main issue, uh, was liability. And, uh, you do know, and you are aware of, that there is a suit in hand now. Uh, the city cannot afford such a claim. Uh, going, I'm just reading verse here out of a COTTS report, which the Recreation Commission adopted. They voted to shut down, as I said, neighborhood parks. Now, all I am saying is we should, I would like to see it directed back to this commission. Maybe they could review it and go, offer us a recommendation. But liability is an issue.
With due respect, I respond, I have missed no point. We have talked about this for months.
Okay.
And as a business person in this community, certainly I understand about liability issues.
Okay. That's where I'm coming from.
Your responsibility comes from liability.
Well, at present, it is not our responsibility. That's where I'm at. With your responsibility it comes.
What I might suggest was that we have a situation that is lending a great deal of difficulty to, to two parties, both of whom are trying to live with some decisions that have been, had been made by the same party, but of a different personality. And although we're not the same people who made those decisions, we still have the same responsibilities that they had at that time. And so if we think that their decisions aren't founded at that time, we owe it to one another to work together to get the resolution, get, get some resolution to the problem. And stop ruffling feathers with one another. That's all I'm suggesting. Roll up your sleeves, let's find a solution, together.
That's, that's, that's why I think why we're here. That's why I think why we're here.
And I do have a difference. I do think we have a grave responsibility. I think this was the most sensitive issue. I think it was a wonderful cause. And I do think the city, we can't lay blame on whose mistake, what was overlooked, but it is because of a city vote that this park now lays on this property. I do believe it's imperative we work together and find a solution. Whether Chestnut Street has to be done in a trade, you know, and I do also would like to work with our Recreation Commission, but I do believe that it's a well-run park. I do believe that there will always be a liability issue on anything, any kind of property the school or the city owns. The one thing that I do want to clarify is we just did not recommend to shut down all the parks, just to shut down parks. What we wanted to do is deal with some of the liability issues because as we had 10 parks, whatever number of parks around, our equipment wasn't up to what we call, it's modern equipment, liable, good working condition equipment. We couldn't afford to replace it all at once. What the main idea was is to pick two parks and to slowly build them up and make them safe parks in our city. One maybe on the east side, one on the west side. This may be a park we want to check into being our east side park. Neighbors very much care about this park. My sister brings her children out there all the time. I'm over there. It is a very family-orientated park. And I think when you have a park like that that isn't closed off to wooded area like Raleigh Beach area, it's a very open, it's protected by many of the people in the community, and because of that caring feeling for a wonderful cause, I think they're the park that has less liability than most other parks. And I certainly do want to work with the Board of Education. I do believe we have a grave responsibility, and it's more on the city's shoulder with this park. I do want to work with everybody, and I would like to bring in members of the Recreation Commission to hear what they have to say, too. I do believe it is a responsibility of ours to deal with this now.
I believe I didn't muddy that clarification I made, Kath. I did say that there was two parks, one to the east, one to the west of the city, that they were concentrating and focusing upon until such a time safety hazards can be rectified. I believe this park, as it sits now, is living harmoniously. It is acting as a park. People use it as a park. The question is ownership. Why does the city of Fulton need a park at the present time when we have 10 of them and unable to maintain what two of them?
But this may be one of the two of the parks that obviously has already had the equipment in there. We maintain it, and this can be the park. Why take a park that has nothing and put everything in it when we have a park? We have a park for a wonderful reason.
Therefore, I say I would like to have some direction from the Recreation Commission.
And I absolutely agree with that.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I think that the first question we have to arrive at is legality as to who actually owns the park. It was my understanding that the park should have been deeded to the city, and it was a, that's where the problem lies, and it should have been the city's property to begin with. I don't know about that.
Can I say something?
Get me that there. Get me saying. If you want to swap property, if you want the park because it's a developed property, give them one of the parks you want to get rid of instead of recreation park. Give them another park. Give them another piece of land somewhere. Then swap even with it, but don't tear up recreation park any more than it is.
That may be another consideration. Could be.
If it's something to a developer, where are you going to get some money out of that? You're all telling not enough taxes.
Any other comments? Mr. Grant.
John Grant, Superintendent of Schools. In our community, we do perform jointly a number of tasks, and we also operate a number of tasks independent of each other. The responsibility of parks in our community is not assigned legally or generally through practice to a school district. However, joint activities of a recreational nature for the use of facilities, whether they be school district facilities or city facilities, I think is a responsibility of an agency to bring together on behalf of the people. Since we're not in the park business and the city is, since the property is being used quite successfully as a park, if it looks like a park, acts like a park, and is a park, then I would respectfully request that the agency responsibility, responsible for parks overall, accept that responsibility. As far as a trade of property, we at present, I'll reiterate, have absolutely no plans, nor do I anticipate the need for plans for the use of Chestnut Street. We are simply using that as a means by which the transaction could take place. Quite frankly, personally, I don't question that a trade of property is necessary, but it doesn't have to be Chestnut Street. It doesn't have to be anything, as I personally feel. But I do believe that the responsibility and the continued responsibility of parks should continue as it is, which basically the city has been taking care of that park. Enough said.
Anyone else?
Just one.
I would just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for spending some time on this issue with us and look forward to finding some resolution that will meet the needs of the community and bring closure to this so that we're not dealing with it for yet another year. So, thank you.
Could I have one more question?
Yes.
In order to make this trade, would man take an act of the state legislature to do the total?
No.
The only time where the.
I think it just really searched that out, and I think it had one or two.
Right. Right. The only way the state legislature would come into play here is if the school district wanted part of recreation park. James Rice called me earlier today and explained that to me.
You're not changing the use of it.
Oh, yeah, you're making a partner.
No, it's a street.
If you trade foot for foot, square foot for square foot, you're going to take a chunk of recreation park.
Oh, no.
No, 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 no.
No, it's not. It's not square foot.
It isn't that. It isn't that at all. Whatever interest.
That's the way I understand it.
Oh, no.
Trade Hewlett Park for a chunk of recreation park.
No. No, no. Just for the, just what would be the street area where the kids had parked and made the mess, just up to their point, not for the park at all.
No.
That's another question. Would you give insurance company? If you're here, is it?
Okay, I'll declare the hearing. Did anybody else have anything? Declare the hearing closed. Thank you all for coming. Council has one more item on the agenda, and I'll read you the resolution. Resolved that this common council directs the city clerk to advertise to receive sealed bids in his office in the municipal building located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, honor before October 4th, 1994, up to 9:00 a.m. to be publicly opened at 9:15 a.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building for tree and stump removal on city right-of-way property in accordance with the specifications prepared by Chief Code Enforcement Officer Daniel Vaughn. This permits the city to get a unit price on the various trees that need to be trimmed and taken down in the wards. I think all of you have submitted tree lists. This is merely the authorization to put that out for bid so we could get the tree work started and get it finished in reasonable time.
Come over.
On the motion, first ward?
Yes.
Second?
Inasmuch as we need that type of work done badly, I cannot approve it. The gentleman putting together the specifications, it's not within his present job scope. No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Excuse me, maybe I'm out of line, but one resolution was right dead as far as the park. No action?
No action.
No, we said we wouldn't take any action.
Then nothing's going to be done?
No, no, that's not it at all. We've heard the thoughts. We'll try to develop a plan and a proposal. Motion.
I would just be asked after the meeting, realizing there would be no action taken tonight. That was your first statement. I would appreciate that the city council act as quickly as possible on the termination of the Hewlett Park site. And if you were not going to take it over with all the liabilities, if you notify the school board as early as possible so that we can take other action. Appreciate it.
Will do. Motion to adjourn.
Can I say something? I hope when this issue comes up again, too, that we advertise it a little bit better so we could have a better turnout and get more input as to how people feel about this in general. Really wasn't advertised as well as it probably should have been, so we could have had people here from the fifth ward in Hewlett Park and people from, you know, the jury about the area.
It's the fourth ward.
The fourth ward, excuse me.
Sure, I think we have some, maybe even a possibility of another meeting, and maybe Terry can help us. It will be on television. He's always very helpful, and I think we can get across the television. I would love to hear more input on this.
As long as we're going to reenter to this discussion, if it should come to pass that there is a land swap, the school board must be aware that there is, needs to be a survey done and probably some sort of easement to the landowner on the lakefront, and we need to resolve who would bear those costs as well.
We've already requested a survey.
The city has?
Yes, we've already requested a city, a survey of Hewlett Park from the school board. And I believe that, and Mr. Grant can speak to this, the school would absolutely guarantee an easement across the property if they were to take ownership of that street.
I still haven't heard any concern about the people that live on Chestnut and on Manichee, about whether their concern about us, that split up of the extra pollution and noise and thus everything else that has developed, that you put them on the park line. I wish you'd take that into consideration, both the council and the school board.
Thank you.
The safety of children playing in the park while there's people parked in the park in the morning. Is this park in the morning going to be fenced in? You know, to provide kids' safety if they are playing in the park?
That's a very good point, because we really couldn't fence in one side of it because we'd have to maintain a right-of-way to Mr. Benway's property. This is what's good about public hearings. Some problems are worked out. Some things you may not think about. It's a good point.
Motion to adjourn. Mr. Allen, second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lincoln, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, John.
Thanks for the tour. Hi.
the Honorable Frances T. Sullivan, Assemblywoman of the 117th Assembly District, Frank Hale, United Way of Greater Fulton co-chairman, and of course, just about everybody knows, Ann Mirabito Snyder, president of the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce. I'd also like to introduce our newest chamber member, Roger Broadwell of Fulton Donuts. Thank you for joining, Roger, and we wish you the very best of luck in your endeavor. They don't want to listen to me through that. I speak real well without this thing. I get intimidated with these things. Besides that, it's loose. I'd also like to thank Terry Reynolds of Save Video Productions for taping this program this morning, and it will be broadcast on cable channel number 36. At this time, I'm going to make my remarks very short because we've got a full program and a very, very interesting program. So at this time, Ann, if you'd like to take over.
This is like an octopus. Thanks, Paul, and good morning, everyone. Vince, can you hold that for me for a second? Thanks. We have two excellent programs underway to help build the local economy, and I want to take a moment to brief you on them. First, the Fulton Chamber of Commerce is joining forces with other chambers in Oswego County to launch Plus Five Oswego County, which is a bi-local program. As businesspeople, we collectively have tremendous purchasing power. Businesses in Oswego County, businesses in Oswego County spend $1.4 billion each year. If each business in Oswego County agreed to spend just 5% more locally, we would add $68 million to the local economy. So if every business spent 5% more locally, we basically have the impact of adding a small industry to, or medium-sized industry to Oswego County. What we're not asking you to do is to spend 5% more than you do right now. Rather, the idea is to look at your current spending and determine how to switch 5% that you're currently buying in another state or in another county and switch it to Oswego County. If you're not sure whether there's a local business that provides a service that you're looking for, you can call the chamber. We're putting together a directory of all businesses in Oswego County now, so we'll be able to refer you to the right business for what you're looking for. If it turns out that nobody's offering a service that you'd like to buy in Oswego County, well, that's still good news, too, because that means we now know of a bona fide business opportunity for someone who wants to expand their business or for someone who's trying to start a business up. There are many local businesses who are willing to match the price, service, and quality of national and regional suppliers if you would just ask them for it. And also, this is kind of economics 101, but it's true that the more people spend locally, the more competitive the local prices are going to be because the better purchasing quantities everyone in this market is going to be getting. So what we'd like to ask you to do is this. Make a commitment to spend 5% more locally. Call the chamber, let us know that you're participating. Let us know if we can help you find suppliers. And display the poster that is on your table in your business to let your employees know that you're committing to buying locally and also to let the public know that you're committing to buying locally. Last week, the Oswego County Legislature agreed to sign on to this program, and so Oswego County government, for the first time, is going to be making a concerted effort to buy locally as they can. We're talking to other local governments and industries now, and the response has been excellent. The second big program is the Greater Fulton Christmas Open House Weekend on November 11, 12, and 13. This is a special event that we think is going to be very exciting. For a three-day period during special coordinated hours, retailers throughout the Fulton area will hold open houses. The whole city, in effect, is going to be a Christmas shopping experience. It's very simple to participate. All you need to do is to order Christmas stock to arrive in time for the weekend, November 11, 12, and 13. Decorate your store for the holidays. Serve simple but festive refreshments. Promote the weekend, this part is key. Promote the weekend with a postcard mailing to your very best customers, and also mention it in your paid advertising. And then to help promote the event, the chamber's investing in a highway banner that will go over 481 by phase. Will also supply bright posters for your store window and will coordinate major publicity in the local media. The city of Fulton is helping by agreeing to install Christmas decorations. The City of Fulton is helping by agreeing to install Christmas decorations, Christmas lights, early. So the Christmas lights and Christmas decorations will be up for the weekend. Two solid programs to bolster the local economy. We thank you very much and now I'll turn this over to Vince.
Now, are you going to get out?
A slide. We need to speak into the microphone, otherwise it won't get picked up.
Thank you, Ann. Well, today it gives me a great pleasure to introduce two people that I know quite well and it's very easy when you know who you're introducing. Frank Hale, who is Co-Chairman of the United Way of Greater Fulton, is going to give us a spotlight talk on what their expectations are this year and how they expect to accomplish them. So Frank, I'll ask you to come up, please.
Thanks Vince. Can everybody hear me?
Too loud.
I've always been called the loudmouth and there's a possibility that I may not need this.
Oh, no Frank, you need that because otherwise the video connected up.
Okay. Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce for inviting the United Way to be part of your program here this morning. We appreciate the opportunity. A number of years ago, someone much wiser than myself wrote the following words and I think that they're very important. They wrote, "That each of us is given the gift of life and what a strange gift it is. If it is used jealously and selfishly, it impoverishes and saddens. However, if it is used for the benefit of others, it enriches and beautifies." Much longer, much time before us, someone in the city of Denver, Colorado, had an idea that they were going to take their life and they were going to help others. And that was a young lady by the name of Frances Weisbart Jacobs. And she's the lady who originally thought of the idea of the United Way. In Denver, Colorado, there was a need for people to help people because of the needs in the community. And what she started as Community Chest has grown into what we now know as the United Way. That organization came to Fulton in 1941. And for the past 53 years, that organization has been providing services for needed, needs in the community. And today, we continue that tradition. On the 12th of September, my Co-Chairman Dick Chemis and I had an opportunity to sit down with the Co-Chairman and the volunteers for this campaign and to kick off at a luncheon that was held here in Fulton. And we were very privileged to have with us that day, the Honorable Frances Sullivan. And we thank her for her time that she gave us. And on that day, we announced that our campaign goal was $221,000. And I'd like to tell you that that's an increase over what we've had in the past. But unfortunately, I can't. What I need to tell you is those dollars are very, very needed in this community. But they're diminished from what the goal was last year. And they're diminished from what the goal was back in 1987 when I was also the Chair for the Greater Fulton United Way Fund Drive. In 1987, we raised $305,000. And that year, $80,000 came from the Miller Brewing Company. But with the closing of the Miller Brewing Company, the United Way, like many of your businesses, are going to take a hit. And unfortunately, we're going to take a hit at a time when the needs in our community are going up. So what we have is the needs going up and the dollars going down and we have a greater gap. And Dick and I have made a commitment this year to trying to bridge that gap, to try to raise more than the $221,000 and we need your help and we need your support. We ask that you do whatever you possibly can to become involved in this campaign, whether it's through raising dollars or helping us by going out and raising dollars in the community. We need dollars and we need volunteers to go out and raise those dollars. We ask for your help. We ask for your support. Also, a long time ago, someone wrote these words. And the man's name was Edward Everett Hale and he was a minister in New England. He wrote, "That I am one. I am one, but I am only one. I can't do everything, but I can do something. And what I can do, I should do. And what I should do, by the grace of God, I will do." I am doing what I can. Dick is doing what he can. We ask for you to do what you can to help us to continue to provide the needed services in this community. We appreciate your support. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning. The United Way, because of all of us, it continues to work in the Fulton area. Thank you.
Thank you Frank. We know you have a tough job ahead of you, but I think you've got the enthusiasm and with our help, you'll reach that goal. And now, our main speaker of the morning, Assemblyperson Frances Sullivan. She's talked to us before. I'm sure everyone in here knows her. She doesn't really need an introduction, but we have to go by the program and do everything formally. So we have to give her a proper introduction, I was told. So I, Frances will probably tell us, I don't even know what she's going to talk about today, but I have a feeling she's going to tell us.
Maybe I just won't.
And if I don't sit down, she won't have time to tell us anything. But I imagine she's going to talk to us about, maybe in review, what was accomplished at the last session and maybe what she expects to happen in Albany at the next session. So Frances Sullivan, our Assemblyperson.
This is a challenge.
Yeah.
I have to bring the newspapers in case you haven't seen them. Thanks. I am delighted always to be with Fulton, the family and friends. You all know that Paul's my cousin, right? It's good to be here. I have been asked this morning to provide an Albany update of the 1994 session, to give you an overview of what was accomplished, what wasn't, and what needs to be. Let me put in a couple of disclaimers right at the outset. First, my remarks will be biased. It's my understanding Senator Wright spoke with you in June, right after this year's budget was passed. And to the extent that I talk about budgetary successes and failures, you might wonder if we work in the same city. It's not so much the location however, as it is the makeup of our respective houses. As a member of the minority in the Assembly, I like to think that we have the luxury and the duty to act as the loyal opposition. We serve as sort of a watchdog and are able to point out deficiencies and propose reforms. As a member of the majority in the Senate, Jim has the responsibility to support measures which have been negotiated by his leader. It is of some current interest to note, I think, that the only Republican Senator who did not vote for the budget during his tenure is gubernatorial candidate George Pataki. Which brings me to my second disclaimer. I know that this is not intended to be a political forum, but you all know me and there is no way that I can avoid my comments being colored by politics. And even if I had the very best of intentions, I would have lost them after spending last evening with Senator Pataki along with several hundred other people at a function in Syracuse. There was an excitement and an enthusiasm for his candidacy which I have not witnessed in New York State politics in 12 years, virtually since Mario Cuomo's first campaign for Governor. And let me say, with deep partisanship, and I promise not to mention this again, I truly believe that the one true best hope we have to regain control of spending, reduce taxes, repair our sagging economy, halt the closing and relocation of business, reverse the mass exodus of jobs, foster growth and opportunity, restore public confidence, and return an era of prosperity to our great state is the election this year of George Pataki. That wasn't too partisan, was it? I could give, I thought John Bullard might be here and I could give equal time if somebody wants to speak for Mario. Having established my biases, let me now mention this year's significant accomplishments, which won't take long. Actually, many of the most noted legislative accomplishments of the last term and of every term were originally advanced by Assembly Republicans, usurped and rewritten by Majority Members as their own and then passed by the 100 to 50 Democrat-controlled House. Among these important measures were adoption of the Family Protection and Domestic Violence Intervention Act, a comprehensive pro-arrest approach to protecting victims of domestic violence and prosecuting perpetrators. Establishment of a DNA base for sex offenders. Expansion of finger imaging of welfare recipients to 12 additional counties, including Oswego. Implementation of enhanced mechanisms for identifying and finding missing children. As well as a number of tax relief initiatives included in the final budget. Of particular interest to business, to the business community, were originally Assembly Republican-sponsored bills which provide for repeal of the labor law requiring employers to pay a $25 permit fee to pay wages by check. How that got on the books in the first place, we can all wonder. Repeal of the 5% hotel occupancy tax. Repeal of the $12 coin-operated machine inspection fee. In addition to adoption of an earned income tax credit for lower-income working families, reduced estate taxes for certain closely-held businesses, reinvestment in SUNY, Restoration of Tuition Assistance Program or TAP awards, increased community college-based aid, and elimination of the $25 fee to take the GED exam. Especially significant to local governments was the 7.6% increase this year and promised additional 10% increase next year in revenue sharing, which is unrestricted aid to towns, cities, and villages. The total two-year increase of $90.3 million restores most of the $100 million which was cut from this program in the 1990 budget and will provide needed relief to taxpayers by helping overburdened local governments. Undoubtedly, one of the most important successes, passage of the long-sought Omnibus Consumer Credit and Deregulation Act, was in fact accomplished earliest in the session and became Chapters 1 and 2 of the laws of 1994. This legislation provided for permanent deregulation of consumer credit interest rate caps as well as other consumer credit provisions enacted and extended since 1980. Near the close of the session, on the day the existing law was set to expire, legislation was finally passed to extend the hospital excess liability pool and authorize the Medical Male Practice Insurance Association, enabling doctors to purchase the medical malpractice insurance they currently are forced to carry. From beginning to end, the 1994 regular session was more noteworthy for its failures than for its accomplishments. In my mind, these constituted failures of commission and failures of omission. It might be argued that the state's failure to begin shifting anything more than a modest share of Medicaid costs out of local budgets was the most egregious omission. New York's Medicaid program is one of the largest and most expensive in the nation at a projected state and federal cost of $16.4 billion for 1994-95. In legislation adopted this year, the state will assume $162 million of the county costs over a two-year span, an amount inadequate to cover one year's growth in expenses. In 1985, Congress enacted legislation requiring each state to provide for the disposal of low-level radioactive waste generated within its boundaries. Since 85 and until July 1994, the host site for New York was Barnwell, South Carolina. And although a low-level radioactive waste siting commission was established in New York in 1986, it has failed to select a facility site. This, compounded by the failure of the Legislature to act on the issue, has resulted in all New York generators being forced to store their waste on-site. In a last-minute frantic attempt to beat the deadline, the governor floated a proposal to designate our own Fitzpatrick Nuclear Power Plant as the state's storage site. To counteract this proposal, Senator Wright and I introduced two bills. One, to prohibit storage at a nuclear facility. And two, to require local approval of the county legislature and mandatory public referendum prior to any sitting. And while it is unfortunate that this important issue had not been addressed in a timely fashion, locally, we can be gratified that the governor's ill-advised proposal did not receive prior, or further consideration before the end of session. Of course, we know, we all know, that this is very much a live issue and you can be sure that both Jim and I will continue to be vigilant until it is resolved. Other serious omissions in this session were the inability to reach agreement on an anti-crime bill, lack of workers' compensation reform, in particular repeal of Dolby Dow, and failure to provide a long overdue cost-of-living adjustment or pension supplementation for our retirees. As grateful as we can sometimes be, as in the low-level radioactive waste issue, for acts of omission, I can find no redeeming value to detrimental acts committed on the taxpayers and nowhere does this hold more true than in the annual budget. The 1994-95 New York State Budget passed a record 69 days late, totaled $63.3 billion, up $5.4 billion from last year, representing over a 9% increase in spending, more than triple the inflation rate, and double the projected rate of growth in New Yorkers' personal income. Newspaper headlines across the state following its passage tell the story in a broad sense. A budget delayed and deficient. Bloated budget passed. Taxpayers left out in Albany. Albany deal. Nothing to celebrate. Late, lard-laden budget. Try saying that one. Bigger, batter budget. New pork state. Pork and baloney. There's plenty of both in the tardy state budget. Specifically, the state personal income tax cut was regnaged upon for the fifth year in a row. And in fact, the personal income tax rate was raised from 7.6% to 7.9%, while the standard deduction for a married couple was lowered from $10,800 to $9,500. Middle-class taxpayers and small businesses hoping for significant tax relief with an acknowledged beginning $1.5 billion surplus were and should have been disappointed. Although it was touted as a tax-cutting budget, taxes and fees were actually increased by more than $1 billion. A spokesman for Support Services Alliance, an organization of 8,000 small businesses, noted that while there were warranted tax cuts for larger businesses... noted that while there were warranted tax cuts for larger businesses, there was relatively little tax relief for the state's 450,000 small businesses. In a poll of more than 600 small businesses in the state on the effect of this year's tax cuts, 34% said there would be no benefit, and 48% said they would be of little benefit. Asked how the outcome of the state budget affected their confidence in the future of New York as a hospitable place for business, an overwhelming 87% said they were discouraged or very discouraged. In a widely-reported discourse with Dan Walch, President of the New York State Business Council, my leader, Assembly Minority Leader Rap Rapoletti, declared this year's budget to be a betrayal of New York businesses. Indeed, even the so-called relief provided to large business and industry amounted to an overall increase. The temporary, and I've learned there are no such words in Albany as temporary or sunset. The temporary business tax surcharge of 15% was scheduled to remain at 10% this year and be eliminated next year. Instead, the surcharge was raised to 12.5% this year, scheduled to go to 7.5% in 1995, 2.5% in 1996, and not be eliminated until 1997. The petroleum business tax is another example of a broken tax-cut promise. This tax rate was supposed to be linked to an index of petroleum prices, which, as you and I know, have dropped sharply since the 1990-91 Persian Gulf crisis. Had the petroleum business tax index not been frozen for the third consecutive year, I might add, in the 1994 budget, a natural 20% rate drop would have occurred, translating into a savings of 2 to 3 cents on a gallon of fuel. Other indicators of faulty fiscal practices, failures of commission abound. While for the second consecutive year, legislation was passed to prohibit unauthorized borrowing, commonly referred to as backdoor borrowing, or borrowing without voter approval, the improper practice was continued under this state budget. Appropriation back debt now amounts to over $18 billion, with an additional $2 billion in backdoor borrowing authorized in the current budget. This, at the same time, the electorate has voted down recent bond issues, such as the Environmental Quality Bond Act in 1990 and the 1992 Jobs Bond Act, the voters refusing to authorize the state to continue borrowing for current programs, the cost of which will be passed on to your children and grandchildren and mine. You do all know that I have a six-month-old new Pat Sullivan, don't you? A further ill-conceived gimmick used to make the budget look better than it is entitled to is the reliance on one-shot revenues. In the 1994-95 budget, these totaled $780 million, including $190 million from the Dedicated Transportation Fund, "dedicated" another word which has no meaning in Albany. In recent years, the reliance on one-shots has been a major factor in reducing New York's long-term bond rating to a tie with Louisiana for the lowest level of any state. As objectionable as these practices and the unchecked increases in state taxes and fees are, the real problem lies in the huge amounts of new spending which continue to proliferate. In this year's budget alone, spending outpaced tax-cutting by $6 to every $1, the largest jump in the last decade. Dan Walch expounded in a recent Business Council newsletter that the only way to cut taxes dramatically and to be able to continue to cut taxes is to control spending. This is a discipline in which the present administration has apparently been unwilling or unable to engage. State-supported spending excluding federal grants now totals $43.3 billion, an increase of nearly 10%, at a time when the state's economy, economic recovery, is expected to continue to lag the rest of the nation. In no area is this more outrageous, in my view, than the majority's continued political practice of pork barrel expenditures, euphemistically termed "member items," legislative initiatives, or, in a recent Bragman newsletter to constituents, as "job creation, economic development, and tourism initiatives." Translated, that means, in this year's budget, there is $148 million in special-interest, local-interest, legislator-dependent, politically-motivated pork projects. Included in this total is a whopping $128 million in new or improved sports stadiums, making sports teams in New York, as one writer described it, "wards of the state." Which brings me happily, happily, to the current series being published in the Syracuse newspapers. While preparing my remarks pertaining to state government for this morning, I thought how necessarily dry, yet hopefully informative and not too boring. If I wanted to be dry and boring, I'd run for state senate. No, they're not, no, they're not all like that. But that's what they call them. But before we discuss some of the juicy issues raised in the Syracuse articles and anything else you want to talk about, let me offer a brief summary of specific proposals that I have sponsored or support, which I believe will improve the present process and help to turn around the anti-business, anti-taxpayer climate created by the practices of the current administration. First, in the area of tax cuts. It is imperative that we keep the tax-cut promises that have already been made. We need, in the very next budget cycle, to adopt the final phases of the 1987 personal income tax cuts, now five years overdue. In addition to implementing these rate reductions, the rates should be indexed to inflation to avoid the automatic tax hikes now caused by bracket creep. Unquestionably, we need to reduce and eliminate the business tax surcharge as scheduled. The petroleum business tax must be indexed, allowing taxes to drop as oil prices drop, passing savings on to businesses and consumers. New York has been rightfully labeled the most expensive state in which to die. In fact, a major portion of this year's budget surplus, which you might not know, was a direct result of the death of a wealthy New Yorker. New York's estate and gift tax approaches 21%, the highest in the nation. More than half the other states have no estate tax of their own, causing New York's to be cited as a major factor influencing residents to relocate or retire to other states. The current budget established a tax credit for certain estates that contain closely-held businesses, generating a modicum of estate tax relief, an estimated $5 million out of a $759 million base. Further measures need to be enacted to reform, reduce, and simplify the estate and gift tax laws, providing relief to our families, farms, and businesses. As we are all aware, energy costs constitute a major share of the cost of doing business, and energy taxes account for a large portion of total energy costs in this state. To assist in lowering these costs, legislation has been drafted which would reduce the gross-receits tax on utilities. This tax upon a tax is based on a utility's total receipts rather than net income and serves to drive up consumer costs for energy and telecommunications. I feel certain that we will see some movement in this important area in the next session. And I could now could go on to other specific areas, but I think it is time to stress that all the tax cuts in the world won't be effective unless profligate, unfettered state spending, as we have come to know it, is brought under control. We cannot continue to spend money faster than New Yorkers can earn it. To that end, our conference continues to advocate for the imposition of a constitutional cap on growth in the state budget. This cap would be linked to personal income, to ensure that government grows no faster than the private sector economy that supports it. We also believe that a vote of 2/3 of both Houses of the Legislature should be required to approve any tax increases. In addition, it is clear that more rank-and-file lawmakers need to be included in the actual budget process. This could be accomplished by our proposed Joint Budget Committee, to be composed of 14 members, five from each House, plus the leaders of both parties in the Assembly and Senate. The committee, along with the governor, would be responsible for negotiating a budget, which would then be presented to the members of the two Houses for final debate, and the whole process should be opened up to the press and public. Removing the shroud of secrecy and doing away with the image of troop-regarded locked doors which surround current budget negotiations could go a long way in restoring public confidence in state government. Communication, fresh ideas, and expanded participation surely couldn't hurt and just might provide the key to improved, more equitable budgets in the future. And just as budget negotiations need to be opened up to public scrutiny, so too should the legislature be held accountable for its allocations and spending practices. And in light of the ongoing news articles, I feel rather smug that in a recent newsletter, I already called for a full detailed disclosure of the legislative budget. The other questions that the articles raise are valid also, and I'm not only willing but eager to share the secrets of the chamber with you. And having said that, I think that it will be a good place to stop and talk about whatever you'd like to, and also to thank you very much for letting me be with you this morning. Are you outraged by these articles? I've had a few calls, I've had a couple of calls. Wally?
Based upon what you said, how could the Senate Republicans justify coming up with a proposal which seems to me to sound at best as half a cup of poison instead of a full cup?
I think you'd have to ask the Republican senators that question. At this point, as you know, as everybody knows, the negotiations, and this has to do with budget primarily, but actually, all the bills, all the major bills, are a three-way agreement, and that's the leader of the Senate, the leader of the Assembly, and the governor. They're all compromised at this point, and here my bias is going to show through. The Republicans have 1/3 of that 3 needed for agreement, and I think until that changes, then we won't see changes in the policy or the way we do business. Werner?
As you all know, one of my favorite subjects is workers' comp. Is there any chance that Dole v. Dow will be introduced this year to be overturned?
For the first time this past year, it was talked about in the Assembly. Again, the Senate is further ahead with it than the Assembly is, so far they've refused. But for the first time, it was included in talk of workers' compensation. A lot was, in my view, not done this year because of its being an election year, and a lot of the hot topics, if you will, the more controversial topics, were left undone in order to protect everybody's record, I guess, I don't know.
Could you explain what Dole v. Dow is?
Well, it was a lawsuit. And its liability carried to the company, it goes back to the company. If there's a problem, the company is ultimately liable, and the courts have held that this was all right, and what they were looking for in the legislation is a repeal of that in order to remove that liability.
And we're the only state left.
And we're the only state left, that's correct, that still has that. I thought everybody'd be yelling about the travesties of the legislature. I had one gentleman called, didn't leave his name, message was on the machine, and it was, "Do you take Nyquil to go to sleep? How do you look at your children?" I like it when they do this, because it really supports what we've have said all along. I love it when they talk about the staff allowances, I like it when they talk about Michael Bragman's office, for instance, and his big staff, because it gives me the opportunity to tell people that I have one person in Fulton, one person in Albany, and that's it. As a freshman legislator, a Republican has given $38,000 to staff two offices. As a freshman, a Democrat freshman has given $60,000. So the inequity starts there and then grows. Dave?
General question on staffing, kind of what appeared in the newspaper on Sunday. Where do you see, I mean, any businessman would take the assumption there's a few hundred million dollars or a billion dollars that ought to be removed from staffing. What do you see as particular, what do you see as particular areas that could be cut? Or am I putting you on the spot?
Certainly not my office.
Understandably, with two people, certainly understandably.
Certainly, I think it's a bloated bureaucracy. In Albany, the staff has grown and grown, $4,600, I mean, the figures are accurate. I don't quarrel with any of the figures that you're seeing. We've got too many mid-level commissioners, we've got a lair in there that doesn't need to be there anymore. It's, just as I said, there's no temporary, there's no sunset. Once the job's created, there's no thought of eliminating it through attrition, you know, even not having somebody lose their job. And there's definitely cuts that could be made. The staffs and some of the bigger offices, the leaders' offices, are huge, they're huge. We have an intern program, which is so helpful to those of us who don't have large staffs, because it provides another set of hands for the session. It's a college program, they get credit and a modest stipend from January to May. And I have had friends of interns of mine who've been assigned to a Democrat Assembly office who never see their member, because there's so many people working in there that they don't even meet them, you know? And for us, it's an absolutely invaluable asset. So there are countless ways it could be trimmed. Jim?
I think that all of us, of course, were worried about waste and stuff, but I think your latest newsletter was worthy mailing because of the way it was structured, that where it had a synopsis of a number of bills and it was very short. I found it good because, I mean, as a businessperson, you can't keep reading up on everything, that's your job, you know? But you could look through there quickly and you could say, oh, there's something maybe I should call and get more information on.
Thanks.
If you're going to do more newsletters, I'd like to see them just like the last one you did.
Liking the graphics coming from you, thank you very much.
The fact that it was a short synopsis of a lot of different bills, you know, it wasn't like, I did this yesterday, or my office did that.
Thank you.
It was this bill and, you know, what it was, this bill and what it was, and it was like two... know, what it was, this bill and what it was, and it was like two, three pages of just the bills.
Thank you. We tried to get a lot of information into an obviously very small space, and, you know, that is controlled, what we're allowed to mail, as far as the size and that kind of thing. So we tried to get in a lot, and I appreciate that, thank you. Teddy?
Activity in terms of the core generation baseline, the monopolies around the power production.
Are you talking about the nonutility generators and the, I think there's going to be a lot of activity in the energy area this year. I think we're going to see a lot of changes. As to exactly what they are at this point, I don't know, but that is in such flux, and my friends from Niagara Mohawk are here in the middle, there's two sides to that. We see it a lot locally, I think, because of SCIF being, because we have SCIF and because it's such a big nonutility generator, that we hear a lot more about it than some other parts of the state. But I don't think there's any question that we're going to have changes in the energy area.
Well, I'm concerned because of the local assessments, like in Tana Gandy, about $4 million worth of assets the town has based on that. I understand, I understand that they're going to cut some way, but it will have a tremendous impact on the state.
It will, it will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francis, and thank everybody else. Incidentally, we're not going to be accused of extravagance here. The name tag that was handed to you on the way in, we ask you to please deposit it into a bucket as you leave, and we're going to recycle these for the next time, because they are expensive. So the next major event for us is September 27th, next Tuesday, it's the open house at the New Chamber Quarters on South First Street in the Seal Rights former machine design area. And what time is that?
5:00 p.m.
5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and boy, it's a good opportunity to see where the chamber's located and some of the people who work there and some of the things that are done there. And I guess that's all for this month, and just keep looking for the chamber newsletter and the chamber mailings and find out what's coming up in October and November. Thank you all again.